This is tonight's zoning board of adjustment meeting. We have no officers present. So Kevin suggested that I be the chairman because I was the former chairman.
I second. Is that a motion?
Did you make a motion?
I would, I would make a motion to have Bonnie substitute for chairman for tonight's zoning board meeting.
I second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Okay.
I'll abstain.
And I'll make a...
I'll vote, I'll vote for that, so I think we need three for a quorum. Sorry? Continue, Kevin.
Can I move down?
Yeah, maybe come over here so you're not so far away. And I think we all should remember to speak into these things so anybody watching can hear.
There you go.
You don't think I look like Terry. So Kevin, did you want to say something further?
Nope.
So, I called the meeting to order. There is a quorum present, Raylene Shippey Rice. Kevin? Kevin?
Bassett.
Bassett. All I could think was Bassett, and I know that was wrong.
As, as an alternate?
As an alternate. For anyone in particular? Doesn't matter. For one of them missing. For Romeo Dina.
For Romeo, yeah.
Okay. And I'm Bonnie Winona McKinnon, acting chair just of this meeting. The agenda tonight provides for a public hearing on case number 21-014-VA. An application from Frank Garrison requesting a variance from Article 2, Section F., dot 3, dot F. of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit an existing shed to be situated 35 feet from the lot line where a 100-foot minimum buffer zone is required for a multifamily property. The property is located at 7 Berry Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as tax map 41, Lot 11. There being no applicant present to present this case, I believe the last time I read the applicant's application, I don't know if you all want me to do that tonight. Hi.
It would make sense.
Pardon? I could read it into the record so that we have a record of there being some sort of a case, spoken case here tonight. So the applicant is Frank Garrison of 71 Route 104, Suite 3, Meredith, New Hampshire, Mr. Garrison's property in Nottingham is located at 7 Berry Road, tax map 41, Lot 11. It is currently a four-family rental on six acres. A variance is requested from Article 2, Section F., 3, F. of the zoning ordinance to permit a variance for a 35-foot setback where 100 feet is required for a multifamily. Supporting information, he has right here the five criteria, but he left them all blank, but nevertheless, signed it and put a note on to please see the attached sheet. So I'm going to move on to the attached sheet. How come we have an empty abutters list? The abutters list is on another page, too?
It's here, I just read it, but I can't find it.
So Kevin, is this supposed to be the five criteria?
That's the attached criteria.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, just pardon me, but I'm gonna rip, I'll take them out nicely, take out the five criteria so I can at least read what he's addressing because he doesn't do that in his notes. If that makes sense. So by statute, any applicant for a variance is required to demonstrate and convince the board that they meet five criteria set forth in law in order to be granted a variance. And in fact, if, if every member of the board believes they meet these five criteria, the board members must vote in affirmative. If a board member doesn't think they meet any one of them, then the board member is required to vote negative against the application. Just as a little background. I have to flip forward. So the five criteria, criteria number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because, he writes, "The structure is a small garden shed that has been moved a short distance, has no impact on the delivery of public services, and does not affect the appearance of the property. See the supplied photo. It was moved to facilitate snow removal." I didn't go over in the beginning because I don't have the chairman's folder, but there, normally, we hear the abutter, we hear anybody who has supporting information, and then we hear people who want to speak in favor of, and then people who want to speak against this application. Just, just let me lay that out because I didn't say it before. We don't have a large number of people in the audience, but I think maybe Mr. Groton House would like to speak, and Dale, you're here for a reason, too, I'm sure. Dale is, is the town, would you call yourself the code enforcer? Yes, the town building code enforcer. So let me back up and read it again. "Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because 'The structure is a small garden shed that has been moved a short distance, has no impact on the delivery of public services, and does not affect the appearance of the property. See the supplied photo. It was moved to facilitate snow removal.'" Number two, "If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed because 'No substantive changes to the property will have taken place.'" Number three, "Granting the variance would do substantial justice because 'No substantive changes to the property will have taken place.'" Number four, "If the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because 'No substantive changes to the property will have changed, and therefore, no, no, I'm not sure what this word is. Can somebody help me? It's in his handwriting, so..." Number four, "No substantive changes to the property will have changed, and therefore, no..."
Impacts.
Thank you. Impacts.
Impacts?
That's a C, not a, not an E. "Will have resulted to neighboring properties." So he's saying it does not impact other people's property. Number five. Number five is a, is a double, is a double question. So I'm not sure he's got a one, he's got a one-sentence answer. I suppose we'll have to apply it to both of these parts. Number five is unnecessary hardship. "Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because 'No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because 'No substantive changes to the property will have changed.'" And "The proposed use is a reasonable one because 'No substantive changes to the property will have changed." I'm not sure he, he would say that, but that's how I have to interpret it since he's not here. Then there's another part to, to criteria number five, which is, "Explain how if the criteria in sub-paragraph A are not established, an unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if 'Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of it." So I don't know, usually at this point, we'd go to the map, which is the next thing in our book. We have a better map than this one, Kevin?
That's what the map...
Okay, so Kevin has looked like a picture, is that Google Earth picture?
It's, uh...
Yes, there's a picture.
Down further in your package.
Right there. Okay, not this one.
You have a map on, for the paper, the seven mile on it.
So it's just...
The applicant, and then the additional mapping is actually from the opposite.
Okay, thank you. I won't, I won't get to that yet, then, I'll just, just go back to this original map. This is from the applicant, correct, Kevin?
That's right.
Okay, so you can see on the map his six-acre lot, number 11. Is that bridge on this property?
Yes.
It's not shown on this map. And I mean, I'm, I'm remembering that he said that the shed was moved to facilitate snow removal. I was kind of looking for a driveway or someplace that you would be removing snow, and I can't see anything like that delineated on this map.
This picture, this picture is far more detailed.
It's showing the driveway per se.
It's showing the buffer zone, it's kind of right down the middle of the property.
Madam Chair, before I, before I forget, can I ask, Kev? The applicant is not here, and he chose not to defer or postpone the meeting, is that correct?
I think the preference would be to postpone the meeting.
Did he...
Say again, I'm sorry.
His preference would be to postpone the meeting. He's stating that he wasn't aware that the meeting was going to take place because of the mask mandates.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your last sentence.
So he stayed, he stated that he didn't think that the meeting was going to take place due to the mask mandate.
Meeting was continued from the last meeting.
Correct.
To this date specific.
So that was an assumption, he didn't ask about that.
He didn't know what we called the masks. Yeah, that's true.
Did, did he ask in writing for it to be postponed?
No, he did not.
So he wasn't clear about what he did want?
We had, when we called him, he, he didn't think the meeting was taking place.
When you called him what?
We just called him, so I called him right now, and he said that he wasn't aware that the meeting was taking place.
Was he planning on coming in? Now that we're meeting? Did we not have to re-notify abutters?
We don't re-notify abutters, no.
Okay.
No. So I had emailed him, I had emailed the opposition as well, and...
And saying that we were having the meeting?
Saying that this is what the meeting is.
So he chose not to attend. So what time, what time did you notify him that we were meeting?
I emailed probably a week and a half, a week and a half ago.
Oh, okay. So he knows the meeting was scheduled. He did not ask, formally ask for a postponement or a continuance?
I'm sure he would, probably, but...
No, you, don't, don't tell me what you think he would.
So you're having, you're asking, I can answer that question, I don't know.
So he would have asked you? Or he would have sent a letter to the board asking us, we are the only ones who could do it?
We, so the indication is, I don't think he knew that the, that the meeting was taking place, that was what he said to me, because he thought because of due to the mask mandate.
But you had notified him that there was a meeting tonight?
I had emailed him.
And you never notified him that it was canceled?
I did not notify that it was canceled.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure, if we made a decision that it's...
Pardon?
I wanted to make sure that if we made a decision, then it was appropriate to do so, you know, and there wasn't any...
It sounds to me, I mean, let's talk about that, it sounds to me like he knew there was a meeting because there wasn't one last time, it's really irrelevant.
It's irrelevant.
I don't know, people, not enough people showed up for whatever reason.
So just a reverb, Kev, he, he knew a week ago there was a meeting, and, and he never formally postponed it?
He was emailed, but he didn't write an email, I don't, I don't have the credit to see that.
Then based on what you said to us, he knew there was a meeting, he did not show up. So I think that the way we're dealing with it is as fair as we can be.
Or we postponed it, so I, I just don't know. I don't know what's right at this point in time, but I'd, I'd be looking for guidance.
I would move, I don't know the way, I would move, but I see no reason not to continue with the meeting.
Neither do I.
So be it.
So...
Sorry, sorry to interrupt there, but...
That's okay.
I didn't want to go further if...
I appreciate it.
If there was some facts that...
I think it's a good question.
That forced us to negotiate.
Given the statements, it seems appropriate to move forward.
If it's appropriate, I have a, I have a question, and I'm not sure who can answer it, you know, Dirk, you're, you may be the guy to answer this, but, and I assume, you know, this is your picture, you show a 100-foot buffer on this side, does that apply on the other side also?
Yeah, if it comes to the point, I'll, I'll...
Let me, let me just back up a little bit, Kevin. I think we're through presenting Mr. Garrison's case. I mean, I didn't read the letter of denial, which we never do read. He was denied because he needs a variance, denied by the code enforcer. There's a lot of background information that we might go over, and then I would say we would let Mr. Groton House speak and bring up his points as a...
Very good.
Since he complained, I think he's in opposition.
I concur.
Okay. So why don't we go through, just to have it in the record, the reason he was denied, he was denied on November 15th, 2021. Denied Article 2, F., 3, F., buffer zone for multifamily development complex. There shall be minimum buffer zone of 100 feet provided between any structure and the perimeter of the tract. No dwelling structures, accessory buildings, septic systems, wells, utility boxes, or service roads shall be permitted within the buffer zone. Note, the exact distance is unknown. Mr. Garrison will provide a survey. Since you're here, Dale, did you mean the exact distance from the, from the boundary?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I figured. "The complaint we received had other items, however, this is the only item that should be discussed as part of the variance process. The other items have been addressed through town legal counsel." So the background, I think, is probably kind of important, but let me just see how many...
Has Mr. Garrison provided that survey?
We don't have a survey in our packet. Actually, I'm just going to review the, this, the background. Most of them are not relevant to our case. Do you agree with that, Kevin? I know you read things with a fine-tooth comb here. Because there were six items of complaint, and the only one before this board is the, is the set.
Correct, but the first note...
I reviewed each.
Would provide a survey, which, which would be pertinent to this, to this meeting.
The application denial is pretty straightforward in terms of the article and the statement presented here that it's 35 feet presented by, by the candidate.
Let me ask Mr. Sylvia for clarification, again, on the exact distance is unknown, Mr. Garrison will provide a survey. Can you share with us the timeframe for providing that survey? Was that supposed to happen before zoning board took up the case? Or it's not clear in this letter?
The survey was supposed to be provided for the ZBA case, but that was also the last case before it continued, so there's been enough time allocated tonight, that was for the previous one.
So it should be here already, as you're saying?
Yes, and he had one in person, I don't know if he needed a person, but we have seen one.
Now, just some background on the case, and, did you write this background, Dale? Or did you, Kevin?
But I would caution respectfully, the background was written...
For all six?
Background was written for a complaint that was filed, it was for us doing research over the last 20 years, it was a legal counsel. A lot of that background applies to things that does not apply specifically to this case tonight. On the other side, I will say something else, though, too. The majority of the complaint is not what is to be heard tonight. I will say the one thing that was left out because we did not know at the time was the parking lot itself is also within the 100-foot. We were not aware that that was altered when we did this denial. We looked at that afterwards, people out there, you just see it, we didn't know when that took place. So I don't know if you would consider that tonight or not, something that we did, or if that has to be a separate denial, and we do this all over again.
I think we can only address what he requested, which is that one variance.
So this will be, because it's been brought to our attention that the parking lot is also within the 100-foot buffer, that is something that we're going to have to address as well.
And was placed there after we had a 100-foot buffer, correct?
Yes, it was placed there afterwards. It was, we didn't know that it was, because it was existing when we found it, wasn't like you came to us and asked for something to be done differently, it was existing, and we learned that, that that was a recent thing, that that was done 10, 15 years ago, it's part of all this other stuff, we would not have included it, but it's come to our attention that that parking lot may have been altered within the last, I believe, 18 months, so that was something that we, we may have to consider as well. But for, if that's the case, then for tonight, we're just going to...
For tonight, it's item five, then. Item five on this history, I, I'll just read that one, then, because the rest of them don't obtain to our case tonight. This background that you wrote, Kevin or somebody started for us and put VA for variance. So number five, "It was determined that the shed was moved without approval into an area that does not meet our setbacks. Mr. Garrison has agreed to return the shed to its original spot or move it to an area that meets our zoning setbacks. Suspense date, November 29th, 2021." That's the only piece that obtains to this case.
What's the significance of that date?
That was timeline, now keep in mind, though, when that background was done, that background was conversations and things like that. He has since filed for a variance, though, so I don't want to speak to him tonight, if he is willing to move it or not. I think he's not yet to speak for them, and I can't speak for him.
Of course not.
When I had the conversation with him back then, prior to this getting to this point, he had said he was willing to move it, but he has since filed for a variance, which should be your first consideration, not, because that supersede whatever he said in the past, as far as whether he would or not, he's applying, asking for a variance now.
But does, does this state that the shed should have been moved by November 29th, and it was not moved?
No, this was an ongoing, so we had a complaint almost a year ago, and it took considerable, this case goes back 20 years, it took a considerable amount of time doing research and history, and those were dates that we were, it was ongoing before that we got to the point of the ZBA. And we got to the point that we went through each one, said what we could enforce, what we could not enforce, in our opinion, and that was a date that was in a discussion period, that wasn't once we had an administrative ruling and saying, these are your deadlines. Like, we've never told him to move the shed. We told him to move the shed, and he applied for the variance, is what happened.
Okay. So it's just an abeyance right now, the question? So I think that is the end of the documentation that I have from Mr. Garrison. And now I'd like to open up the floor to anyone who wishes to speak in favor. There being no one, I will open up to anyone who wishes to speak in opposition, or to bring new information in front of the board.
Good evening, my name is Dirk Grotenheis, and I'm a direct abutter to the property, 3 Poor Farm Road.
Is the microphone on there?
Yep, green light's on.
Okay.
I'll try and speak up a little bit, too.
Okay, moving just a little closer. Thank you.
Okay. So again, Dirk Grotenheis, I'm a direct abutter at 3 Poor Farm Road, and that's...
Across.
Lot 4A on that map that submitted.
You live next door.
Yeah, I'm a direct abutter to the south. And I submitted some of the information, I submitted a letter specifically, well, it stated the 13th, and I'll just clarify, so we did have a meeting here, the original posting, which was, I think, December 13th, that meeting was opened, the case was continued to this date specific, meaning today, and that applicant was here. So I just want to let you know that there was just no quorum, so the people that were here, board members decided to continue it to this case, which is tonight. So no other notices went out to abutters, they didn't need to, because it was just continued to the next meeting, which is today. So this, there was no notification other than that night, so I was here at that night, I was notified, and the applicant was here at the same time. There's a, a long history to this, I did write a letter with a number of points in it, I don't want to read through the letter, I don't want to go through it item by item, but I do want to point out the specifics in this case. As it's been mentioned, this, there's a long history of non-compliance at this location, and this dates back to the original point when ZBA granted a variance for a multi-use family. That was back in 2005. So, and in 2005 is when they grant, the ZBA granted a variance to allow this four-family, multi-family, right? At that time, the ZBA required, as a condition of that approval, that a site plan be provided. None was provided at that time. The applicant did not provide any site plan, nor was it followed up on by the, the town. So towns...
Can I just ask?
Yeah.
Did Mr. Garrison own it at that time?
He did not own it at that time. Yep. But he purchased the property, and then code enforcement was also alerted in 2018 and issued a number of violations. Those violations were ignored, there's no, nothing in the file. Again, it was stated that they need to apply for a site plan, that was not done. So even in 2018, when Mr. Garrison owned it, he was not complying. In 2021, he moved the shed, and a number of other things that were listed, but for tonight, let's just concentrate on the shed. He moved the shed and expanded his parking lot, and the shed is located, well, the shed's located, it was kind of in the center, and I pointed out a couple of photos that I, or maps that I made, because the site plan that was submitted from the applicant did not have any detail in it. And in fact, the shed's size is not even identified on, in the application, so I don't know how big the garden shed is, but it's big enough to see from my property. So I'll just talk to, on my map, the number one that's in a box, that was the original location, I'm just, on the map, that was the original location of the shed that he moved, and he moved it to where I have is, that yellow box, which is 1R. And in his application, he's indicated that it's 35 feet from the property, and it's not, it's actually 28 feet. He did not have a survey, I've had the property surveyed, so I know where the property boundaries are, but he moved it without any approvals. So through my indication, my notification to the code enforcement that it got moved was when he decided to now have, you know, apply for a variance. So only after the fact. But he also expanded the parking lot, which by that requires a site plan application and a ZBA variance. So the shed is now, and I want to go back to what Kevin was asking, the property in itself is about 200 feet wide. That's as far as the frontage is, it's only 200 feet. The multi-use family, multi-family use is a requirement of 100-foot buffer zone for any abutters. Well, this one doesn't comply, it's in non-compliance, but that's what was granted back in 2005. But 100-foot goes right down the middle of the property. So in effect, there's 100-foot on one side and 100-foot... So in effect, there's a hundred foot on one side and a hundred foot on the other side. That's all a buffer. And that's all to protect, supposedly to protect the abutters' views and have some sort of buffer to this multi-family. So anything that's done within that hundred feet, with anything almost within, done within this property, requires a variance. So that's why he's here, to have that variance required for that shed. So I wanted to just point that out. And I also wanted to go through kind of the, trying to satisfy, you know, the five criteria. In my opinion, restating no substantive changes have been made is just, is just a ridiculous statement. I mean, you have to prove it. That's not a proof, that's just an opinion that it's no, no big change here. I'm just moving a shed that's closer to somebody's property from where it was. So those just have, carry no weight, in my opinion. There's no factual information that was provided to support it. So there's no, even his measurements are off. His site plan is just a tax map with some houses drawn on it. And in my opinion, there had been substantial changes. So I think my point here is that any changes that happen in here require a site plan application and a variance. So the spirit of this ordinance is not being observed by granting this variance, because the moving of the shed, you know, expands, expands the use, expands the parking. And then probably the bigger thing here I have is that the, the applicant states that the hardship here, unnecessary hardship, is to facilitate snow removal. That's no different than any other property in, in the whole community. Everybody has to plow snow around different things. You know, snow removal has happened here for twenty years. So there's been no hardship, there is no hardship by him having to relocate this shed. It was just the convenience of him being able to plow his snow in a straight line.
If I may interrupt you for a moment. Just reviewing his actual statement. He did not use that as hardship. He used that for very, for criteria number one, that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. So he's, he's, that was the only, the time I believe that he mentioned facilitating snow removal.
Well, the, that means just goes to the fact that that's the purpose of him relocating the shed. Is to aid, aid in his snow removal. I, there was no other hardship. The statement that he made was that there's no substantive changes.
The public interest is generally not snow removal on somebody's driveway either.
Yeah. I mean, it's not a special condition. You know, snow removal happens everywhere else. It's not unique to this property that distinguishes it from any other property. So in closing, just, there's probably one other thing I wanna note in my discussions with code enforcement is that there are three other sheds, or one's a bridge, but three other sheds on the property that are right up against my property. Those have existed there since I bought the place. I'm not asking for those to be removed, but what I am concerned about, and I've taken photos of them, are the conditions. The conditions are deplorable. They're all broken, they're not fixed, they're not, they're just not maintained, they're just falling over. These are all unsightly with graffiti on them. These are buildings that are just not maintained and not kept. So another concern of mine is that if this shed gets moved even closer to my property, if the grant, granted, if the variance is granted, that it won't be maintained. And the code won't be maintained. And the code enforcement officer told me that they have no jurisdiction to require a property owner to maintain their sheds. So if this gets even closer to my property line, it's, there's no way he's gonna, I mean, he may maintain it, but he may not. But there's no guarantee in that. So I'm asking the zoning board do its duty and uphold our zoning ordinance by denying this variance. Thanks.
Thank you. Sylvia, would, do you wish to speak to this application? Sorry, Kevin, have questions, sorry.
I have a couple of questions.
Go for it.
Could you just, behind the, the red building structures, housing structures, what is that property? Is it flat and grass kind of thing? You know, where the, where your six-acre words are and, and out behind?
It's, it's, it's hilly, it goes up towards the back. But again, even, both sides are in a hundred...
An ideal spot for that yellow shed would be behind one of the red buildings, so you can't even see it, and straddled a hundred, 'cause it might not meet a hundred on each side and, and to put it, you know, I'm just saying. An ideal spot might be back there from a, because it was mentioned that he could move it back to where it was and it's still not conforming.
Right, it won't be, it wasn't conforming there prior, but it was, it was granted approval by the zoning allowing that multi-use permit.
Okay.
The other option is he can remove it.
He could remove it. It's the only good one he's got, though, from, from your observation, so.
You, you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You mentioned that the property behind is hilly. I was over there, but there's a shed, a garage, number, number two is a garage. Is that on the hill or is that on the flat?
That's, it's up on a hill. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, there's no driveway access to it. There's a picture of it, it's structure two, garage.
Right. And number three. And that is on your side?
They're all along my property line, yeah.
So, so two and three are along your property line?
Yeah, two, three, four, which is the bridge, which was damaged three years ago, three or four years ago, and it has not been fixed. It has not been repaired.
Looks like two and three could have the fire department have a little practice. There's not many places he could put that shed to make it conforming and within proximity of the residences, which I assume, I assume it's a tool shed or a utility shed of some sort that would wanna be near the residents and not hundreds of feet away. But an assumption on my part, Dirk, is that if he was to move it out behind, that, I'll say standalone red, red structure, almost where you couldn't see it, might be a reasonable compromise. Basically along the dotted line that you showed.
If, if it's beyond the hundred feet from my property, I don't care where it is.
Is that okay, Kevin?
It doesn't make sense to move it back where it was.
So you're suggesting behind the red building, along that hundred-foot line?
Yeah, there's, you know, pictorially, there's one red building that's not attached to the other, you know, L, L shape. And if it just happened to be sat out there, it might be blocked from the neighbor's view and it might be very, very close to, if not, you know, at the hundred-foot buffer. And it might be a win-win for all folks.
Clarify, I understood you correctly. But that wouldn't be up to us, that would just be a nice recommendation or suggestion.
It's just a compromise recommendation, yeah.
It may not have, just one other point here is just Berry Road is a scenic road. So it's a scenic road, which we like to keep looking more rural, community-like.
He's asking us to allow him to leave it where it is, correct?
Yeah, that's, the variance is to leave it where it is.
That's the request before the board.
I believe so.
So I have an issue with the fact that he has not described any form of hardship. I mean, it might be easy for us to conjecture one in our minds, but he has not made a case for hardship at all. I'm sorry, Bonnie. I'm having a problem with the fact that, of the five criteria. He has not, he has not answered the hardship question. Only with, I'm looking for the papers, 'cause I took them out. Only with saying no substantive changes to the property will have changed. That does not address hardship. Is not, it does not state why he needs this variance for hardship reasons. It doesn't address either of the issues under item five. Correct. I don't think it does. But I'm open to discussion if you guys think it does.
I'll step back and let you guys deliberate if you need, I'll be here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Do you, Dale?
I don't have anything to say for either the butters or the applicant. I'm handing out any further questions.
So perhaps it's time to close the public hearing, so we can deliberate. Have we read it? Is it, do, do you both agree?
I'm sorry, I was reading.
Is it time for me to close the public hearing so the board can deliberate? I don't think we're gonna get further information from the people present. So the public hearing portion is now closed. I always wanna gavel. So we can ask questions of anyone who is here and of the documentation that we have, which you both have. And if you look at the five criteria, I don't think the first one really addresses, well, maybe it does. Doesn't really hurt the public interest, except for it don't violate the ordinance. I think number two is addressed sufficiently. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed. I don't see how that isn't answered appropriately, convincingly, shall I say.
Well...
I don't think number three is...
It did not mean it before, it does not mean it now. So the spirit is sort of still there.
That's one way of looking at it.
That's one way of looking at it.
I think it's the hardship one that I have the most issue with. I mean, it's always, it's often the most difficult one to explain, and we don't have an explanation at all.
And I agree with that and I hang my hat, because this is a non-residential property. So the setbacks are a hundred, you know, and if, if you come in with a variance, you don't come in with a, a, you know, a ten-foot setback. For the residential, you can get away with a little bit more, 'cause it's a fifty or a twenty or what have you. There are more special conditions. In this case, without seeing a lot of the, the property features, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of property features that would negate moving it to a better place. I think it was moved out of convenience rather than out of need or hardship. I guess a note based upon code enforcement, letter number five. It says, Mr. Garrison, to agree to return the shed to its original spot or move it to an area that meets our zoning setbacks. And I guess I would entertain a, I don't know, if we could do a condition or a suggestion that, that, that it does get moved to an area that meets our zoning setbacks or, or try to achieve the zoning setbacks. It may or may not be achievable. It might, you might need to come back and say, I wanna move it here and it's ninety feet and it's supposed to be a hundred or something like that because of the property. But it would be, I would think it'd be best for all the town and the butters that the second suggestion try to be done as much as possible, rather than putting it back in its original spot, which is still non-conforming. So I just, that statement just allows it to be, go back in the original, still be non-conforming, visible, where it might be able to be moved, that gets it closer to meeting the zoning setbacks, if not meeting them entirely.
I don't think that, that the code enforcer, who, you can correct me if I'm wrong, can accept an application for something that more closely meets if it doesn't meet. I think that he would still have to come back here.
Like I say, I don't know how to suggest something at, at this board level. So I just wanted to state that for the record, if, if nothing else.
He had already agreed to, to return it to its original spot or move it to an area that meets the zoning setbacks, which is not where it is now. So my, I'm not gonna make the motion, 'cause I'm the chairman, I could. But I don't think he made a very thorough presentation, 'cause he left out hardship entirely. So I would have a hard time voting for it. Background alone, and if somebody denies it, it's gonna be denied. I think we should ask him to put it back where it was or just simply deny his request. And I don't know what that does to his ability to come back and ask for something. I think he could come back and ask, you know, figure out where to actually put it that would more, be closer to the setbacks.
And that would probably be the case. Correct, if he, he moves it back to the original spot, end of story.
It doesn't mean anyone's permission to move it.
But if he moves it anywhere else and it's non-conforming, he would come back.
Well, you can't come back unless there's a significant change. But once you deny, you deny unless there's a significant change. I believe, and I'm not sure even how you would suggest, but I believe something that you were trying to say, Kevin. I don't know where did your mouth would be like. We would approve within eighty feet or something like that, because you don't have a specific location. You don't know where he wants to put it, so you can't give a specific zone. You could give a variance. You could give a variance of a distance, but the, that could be, you can't distinguish unless you very specifically say how it is.
Right.
You can't say on one side, you're like, you know, it has to be very clear to me what it is that you are suggesting that I can approve. Because as you said, if it doesn't meet the, the ordinance, I can't approve anything.
Right, and, and he'd come back, right.
So.
So, he could come back several times with a variance, and depending upon each one, we would make, we would treat individually.
Unless it's a significant change, you're not allowed to come back.
What do you mean by a significant change in his request?
There, there has to be, you can't just keep coming back to the ZBA, you know, okay, I can get it this one, I'll come back next one, next one.
I'll put it here, I'll put it here.
You can't change to what it is that you're asking for, or a situation, or something that has, that has happened. He can't come back and just ask for this again, because he doesn't like the answer, in other words.
So, we can make recommendations?
Not really.
You can't make recommendations. You could approve, if you wanted to give a variance, you could give a variance saying like, we would authorize it to be within ninety feet of the buffer, or, or seventy, or whatever you like, something. You have to give something specific. I have no leeway in determining what your intent is.
I'm just trying to clarify that as the zoning board, we could make a statement that he could come back with a proposal within X number of feet, whatever the board decides.
If you were going to do that, it wouldn't, that would be the case, you would be doing a continuance. You just wouldn't be given a ruling. Like if you're suggesting that he comes back with more information, you don't suggest that he just comes back. You can't give a ruling, or you can do what you want, but you don't give a ruling saying, we're not approving it, but we suggest you come back. If, if you don't have enough information, if you're not comfortable, you continue the case.
Right.
You, it's not a suggestion that he, you know, it's either, you need to give him the variance, or you don't, or you continue it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure what you were saying.
Yeah, it would be.
Now, keep in mind that we are going to come back again because of the parking lot situation, because we weren't aware of the, that I am going to be denying that separately. So, he is going to be coming in front of you in any ways. Or, he's going to move the parking lot back to the original.
So, I, I guess the point is that, you know, if we deny tonight, a statement could be said as that, you know, we would entertain a, another zoning board, you know, request if the shed cannot meet the setbacks on the property. In other words, if he can't find a place that meets the setback, then he would probably come back and ask for another, another meeting. So, we don't, we don't have to say that.
Or I would just say, we just deny it and leave it at that for now.
Right.
He could come back when, when he does the parking lot.
So, hopefully, that's what he does. He tries to find a spot, goes out there, measures it, and it's ninety-two on one side and ninety-eight, or, you know, you know, ninety on the other. If he can't find a spot, he has to come back.
Right.
And, and it would be much more favorable from a zoning board, you know.
And I would hope this would encourage him to be more detailed in the information he brings to the board. If he says he's going to do a survey, he brings the survey. If he's, if he's asking us to give him a variance, he has to meet the five criteria, including the hardship one. Not just kind of write off something really quick and easy.
Just to be clear, if the shed does not meet any of the setbacks, he does not have to come back to you. He does have the option of returning it to the original spot that is approved in 2005.
Right.
So, he does have that option, no matter what.
So, he had it approved once. Right.
Right.
That is something he has the right to do.
Yep. The fact that it's right in the middle of his new driveway might force him to go find a spot. That's about, so, but.
So. Anyone like to make a motion on this application?
I will, if you want me to.
I would like you to, yes.
I'll make a motion to deny case 21 dash 014 dash VA for the application of Frank Garrison, requesting a variance from Article Two, Section F, dot three, dot F of the Nottingham zoning ordinance to permit an existing shed to be situated thirty-five feet in the lot line where a hundred-foot minimum buffer is required for multi-family property. Property is located at Seven Berry Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as TAC map forty-one lot eleven.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. There is no one to oppose. The board is unanimous. The application has been denied. Moving on to the, moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is public comment. The board cannot respond to comments made about specific properties, projects, or applications. Do you clarify what that, I didn't, what that is about, Kevin?
Uh, it's just standard, standard, uh, I think, I have that some company talks about a, this is a, like, I don't know, I didn't.
Oh, you mean if a citizen comes up to us to talk about it, we can't discuss it? That's, that's only prior to the decision, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just so everybody here is clear.
So, is this?
So, we can't talk about cases before they're heard, and that makes perfect sense.
Now, is, is that in a public sense or a private sense?
Um, I would say in a private sense or a public sense that could become public.
Okay, just trying to clear.
We're not supposed to talk to anybody.
Yep, okay.
Even really each other about these cases. Do you have something to?
I'm just going to add that, uh,
That's clear.
The planning board does have that line item in there, just for public, if they want to just have some, if they wanted to state something to the board, not case-related.
Gotcha.
Specific case, but if they had something that they wanted to bring up to the planning board that, to keep, you know, an eye out, or some questions that might happen from a, from the public. We've done that for the past, maybe, three years, and I don't think we really have had any public come in specifically for that, so.
Yeah, we, we, we tend to have, I think, a narrower purview than you do, so I don't think we get too many people suggesting.
That was the intent, I don't know why.
I, I've just not seen it before, but I haven't had an agenda for a while, so.
Yeah, so usually, so clearly, still, you know, quite a lot to learn, but, um, the agenda, I have a, basically a template for your agendas. That's just kind of standard.
On the template, got it.
Standard, uh, of our agenda, on the template. So, I just leave it in the same template, basically the same template. Clearly, that may not necessarily apply in this case, it was the first time in the program, so I don't. You guys don't feel like it applies, so.
Doesn't bother me. It's a nice reminder, actually, about talking about cases outside of this room.
Just so people can go on a can, like, that's my assumption.
Okay, so, um, there's something on here about minutes. Do we have minutes to approve tonight?
Nine twenty-one, ten nineteen, eleven sixteen. Are you all set?
Yes, thank you.
I'm still going to be here for a moment.
Okay, thanks, Dale. Thank you, sir.
And Dale needs a ZBA schedule. He was looking for one this morning, that's all. Dale, yeah. Ally is, so are the minutes in here?
No, I haven't seen them anyway.
I sent, I sent you guys out the minutes.
So, I, I, I'm not sure that I've reviewed them comprehensively enough to vote on them either. Maybe we, can we postpone that to the next meeting?
I guess I'm, I'm in the same vote, so.
It would take all three of us for appro, to approve anything. So.
Include them in the next.
Can you resend them to us as well?
Resend them with the next meeting.
Thank you.
Said resend them with the next meeting, the minutes to be reviewed.
Yep.
Yeah. I guess the last item on the agenda is a, I move, does anyone wish to adjourn? Do I have a question?
Your turn.
Pardon? We need a motion to adjourn.
I just made it.
Didn't hear you.
Oh, I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, Kevin, but this Kevin, too.